I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know this has been out before, but Jefferson Solutions?
It's the Gatsby 45.
The two rubber pairs.
Okay.
Since I've been here.
Okay. So it's repaired if there's not enough?
Yeah, it's the hardware, it's the actual computer. If something breaks and somebody's on the warranty.
Okay.
The audits that we just had?
It was the Gatsby 45.
Okay.
Swammy coffee run.
Is it smaller than the bowl?
Seems smaller than the bowl. You need to check Steve?
Oh.
Do you need the checks?
No.
You just look confused.
No.
You look confused. No, I wasn't being sarcastic. You looked general.
You got heroin on your head, Steve?
Hello?
You got heroin on you tonight?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here you go.
Steve, what is it?
No.
Now, do you know what the admin fee is on the treasurer?
Yeah, that's the Wakefield's portion of the S A U.
I've noticed seeing it as a minute, is there no fee to that?
Well, it's not a fee, it's just not a Wakefield's portion. Monthly portion.
Go ahead.
Why?
I don't know.
No.
Just asking.
Oh. You okay?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the manifest. I'll say about all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
First Amendment to minutes to offer, page 1 of 7. At this time going, Seer made a motion to have permission with the board to take time and report on a breach. I think that should be an alleged breach. After the words "policy J R A" period, Bob Willeth seconded this motion. I believe, if you watched the video, Mrs. Seer clearly stated that she had a discussion with the superintendent on this issue, and he stated that he wanted no part of it. I believe that should be part of the minutes. It's a very important statement. So I'd like to inject the words, Mrs. Seer stated she discussed this with Superintendent Tursi, and he wanted no part of this. He said.
You know what? I'm gonna say, one, you weren't in the room. Two, it wasn't a discussion. And, three...
It's what you said.
Mr. Fogg.
Those are your words. You watched the video.
I'm glad you have time to sit home and watch that video over and over.
I didn't.
You know what?
I didn't.
It gives me pleasure knowing you have time to contemplate that. You weren't in the room. I asked about a policy, and he said he wanted no part of it because of the past baloney that's gone on, and I respect that.
I appreciate that.
If you feel that it has to be in the minutes, then, you know what? I think it's great that you feel that you can add wherever you want.
You made the statement on it.
Then you know what? By all means, Ralph, put it in the minutes.
Thank you.
But you weren't there.
I heard the statement you made by him.
Mm-hmm.
It was clear and direct.
Yep.
Actually, I'm gonna make a motion to table the minutes, 'cause there's a lot of conversation that is not in the minutes. My God, is the curriculum coordinator's report and the student services director's report, and I think it's important that that information, that more of that conversation is in the minutes, 'cause it's totally whitewashed out of the minutes, and I wanna go back and watch the video and inject more input into those two items.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the minutes amended. Mrs., it's not, it doesn't have to be verbatim. You're giving me the answer time to make your suggestions to Mrs. Sogan in a respectful way, and if it's not done by the time of the meeting, it should go forward. I make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Are you gonna give a second for the motion? And should we have more discussion on the second?
I'll second it. Discussion?
We're not gonna take the time to go through any other pages. You don't have anything else?
What else would you like to change, Mr. Fogg?
I'm not talking about changing, I'm talking about having the minutes accurate, Mrs. Joy.
The minutes do not have to be verbatim, they have to reflect what was done.
No, they don't. Absolutely.
As in motions made and in decisions made. It doesn't have to be word for word.
No, it doesn't. It has to have the pertinent information.
We have all the backup correspondence and all the paperwork that the administration gives to us, I think that should be.
Not all of us have.
That's my thought.
Not all of us have the secretary on speed dial. We don't have the opportunity to just call.
Point of order, move the question.
Fogg has a motion on the table to accept the amended minutes, the minutes as amended, excuse me. I made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you for approving the minutes.
You're welcome.
Public comment? Being done. Administration, many entry reports. You're up, Nathan.
I have the Wakefield expense report up first for approval of number 23.
You got approval of minutes of non-public sessions, or?
That was in my motion.
Any questions on the expense reports?
Yeah, I have another question. Isn't really proper practice to have line items zeroed out, declared as encumbered, or is that just MRI's approach to bledging? Seems to me that a lot of these lines that say zero, they're huge numbers that have been encumbered, and that gives an awful lot of wiggle for, I've never seen it happen that way, and I have witnessed it for a while now. Is it MRI's recommendation? Is it something that the law commands it done that way, or is it just a particular personal preference?
It's common practice to encumber what are considered uncontrollable costs, which are contracted services, maintenance agreements, tuition costs, 'cause that gives you a more accurate figure early on as to what your bottom line number is. It actually gives you less wiggle room, because once you encumber what your known costs are, it gives you, as I said, an accurate figure of what your bottom line is. So if you go to the last page, page nine of the expense report, you see right now we have $436,000 for the remainder of the year, so we know that we're tight for the remainder of the year. If we don't encumber those known costs, then it leaves us more of a guessing game as to what our bottom line number is, because we didn't encumber our known costs. So now we know we have $436,000 to work within between now and the end of the school year.
So, is it your thought that, or your account that that monies were left into, these are non-interest building monies? I mean, there's no interest to result on these accounts that they stayed in, into where they go when they're, when the town cuts a check and sends it to the school district? Goes somewhere, right? Doesn't it go into an interest bearing account?
Right, when you encumber the monies, you're not necessarily cutting the check. Take tuition, public tuition, for example, $2.3 million, and we pay that, what's, three payments? So we pay Rochester School District three payments. So, these monies are encumbered, however, you don't, actually, you're not cutting the check for $2.3 million. It just knows we're encumbering those monies, and the monies are on hold for that tuition payment, it's paid out three times a year.
So it's still collecting interest?
Still collecting interest.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for explaining.
The next report I have is revenue report through November 23.
Question on that. Whereon, would the interest that the accounts bear be reflected on these revenue reports at all, ever, at some point? We have monies in an account building interest, when does that get reported?
Once the revenue comes in, then it would collect interest.
So at some point during the school year, the interest that's built on these accounts will be reflected in a revenue report one time or another? I haven't seen it yet.
The next report I have is the grant overview, and that, as well as the other ones, is through November 23. And then the next report I have is the financial statements for Cafe Services for September and October.
Nathan, can you please tell me what A, B, and C means again? On the, on the accounts receivable?
On...
I just didn't copy it. On the...
The eligibility. A is paid, B is reduced, and C is free.
Okay.
And then, the next report is the negative balance report through November 23. And then lastly, I have, as requested, the first and second letter that's sent home for the negative balances.
We have a request to move something on the agenda. There's a young man here who wants to discuss that, I was going behind tonight.
The budgeting of the Washington DC trip is, I guess, percent.
So does anybody care if we take this out of order and move Cafe Services down tonight? You okay? Everybody's okay with that?
No, we don't.
Moving the DC trip questions ahead of it, so this young man can get home and his mom.
So moving new business, item A, up to?
Yeah, number six up to now. Before we get into the Cafe Services. Is that okay with everybody? Sorry, guys, you can, can you hold on like it isn't? Okay. You got kicked to the curb, I apologize. I know there was some discussion last school board meeting about the cost of the DC trip, and one of the parents is here, and she had asked if we'd put it on the, we would put it on this agenda to see if maybe we could discuss putting some additional funding in the budget to help pay for the cost of the additional, I don't know, for, Mr. Gregor, can you help me out here? What were we?
What were you talking about?
The budgeting, adding additional budgeting for the eighth grade DC trip.
Yeah, for next year.
For next year.
For next year.
Right. And did we find out, like, how many kids and what the...
Jan. Hi. So I can speak to most of this, I think. Currently, by my records, there's 52 seventh graders in this class. I have to assume that a couple will drop, but I also have to assume that potentially we could gain a student next year, and I think that would be a special case, 'cause we don't, we don't know that. But either depending on where the families are at with the trip and their opinion on it, or where, whether the student wants to go, or if the parents feel like they're at a point where they could be trusted on a multi-day overnight trip, pretty far from home. I have to assume that the numbers would probably level off somewhere around 50. It could go down to 45. I don't know, I've never been part of that.
Now, did you get any feedback from the parents on the first informational meeting that you held? I know you held the first one.
Absolutely. I don't wanna curse it, but so far I have not had any negative feedback from any seventh grade parent. Questions, for sure, like, how many chaperones, what are the accommodations in the hotel like, what's the bus like? You know, will they be allowed to bring their phone? How are the rooming situations gonna be figured out? Lots of great questions, lots of enthusiasm about contributing to fundraising, but nothing of the, like, nope, not my kid, not this trip, not yet, anyway.
Okay.
So there is definitely positive energy surrounding the trip amongst the students and amongst the parents that I talked to at the two information nights we hosted, and all throughout parent-teacher conferences. I was able to meet with, I mean, most of the seventh grade parents, and again, other than just random questions, nothing wholly abhorrent.
Now, did you get a rough estimate on the numbers? I mean, you know the number of students roughly, now what's the cost per student roughly? I'm not asking for the exact.
So the quote that we were given, the one that we're gonna run with, is 445 a student, and that as part of the overall proposal from Jump Street, the company we're going through, that comes with five chaperones complimentary. So the five chaperones would be for free. So 445. The only cost that the, the overall cost of the trip doesn't include is lunch. So they throw in dinner vouchers, that's part of that 445, they throw in breakfast at the hotel, but lunch on the way down on the bus, lunch on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday on the way home, that's not part of the overall quote. Things like spending money and whatnot, you know, I, to me, that's up to the parents and where the parents are coming from, but if we settled on 445, I have to assume that each lunch would be about 10. We're talking about eating the city, but we're also not talking about going out to expensive, you know, 20-plus dollar a meal restaurants while we're there. I mean, I'm thinking it's fast food on the way through, so nothing, you know, no table service or anything like that. So I, I don't know if you guys have a fundraising cost analysis as part of your packets?
Just, Mr. Soul presented some figures, just wanna run by the board. Approximately 50 students would be attending at $500 per student, that's approximately $25,000. They estimate fundraising to be around $15,950, which leaves a difference of $9,050. So basically, what they're saying is they'll be short about $9,000, which could come through other fundraising opportunities, however, the original request was potentially if the board was interested in putting monies into the... However, the original request was potentially if the board was interested in putting monies into the budget for next year, knowing that your deficit's about nine thousand dollars for the, for the trip. It's up to the board as to whether you want to budget any monies for that or not, based on the numbers.
Well, go ahead.
How have they done it in the past, these kind of groups, to raise this money?
Well, it varies by school. You know, some schools run it on a basis of the kids who can pay, go. The kids who can't, don't. And others have done fundraising such like they do anything. I think this eighth grade team has done significant fundraising, much more so than I see in other schools.
So the balance, nine thousand dollars plus, in the past, I'm sure they had a balance that they had a hit. It was all done by fundraising?
All done by fundraising.
Did the, the school donate anything to that?
They did not.
Have, can we, we haven't gone now. I should give them a rate for it. We were talking about the Boston trip.
That's been the Boston trip. Last year, we had, there was, they did have a surplus beyond what they expected to have to expend for that Boston, and that's what we talked about, spending the night in Boston. That was what we received by the parents, and they can't send the kids off more money. They can do something else in there also personally for the trip. But in the past, there has not been the opportunity for the students here to go for a long time and beyond Boston.
Steve?
Actually, what accurate, it was stated that it was sold in that, from the first, that we would add money into the budget for this. It, it was sold in as that to, the goal would be to use no other, any, anybody else's money other than fundraising. And then after the vote was taken, then it was brought up that we could, maybe we could add money into the budget. I think as, you know, as, maybe as an educational trip as this would be, and the children, you know, could get some benefit out of it. I think the children will learn far more by having to work for the trip instead of turning this into a social program that is funded by the taxpayers. And I would have, my, my vote would have probably been different had I known prior to that we were going to be ten thousand dollars short. I don't think it, that the taxpayers should be obligated to, to fund the trip. Had I known that prior to, my vote probably would have been different. And like I said, the children will learn far more. They'll enjoy the trip far more, and they'll appreciate the trip far more if they have to work for it than they ever will by receiving a handout.
Morning. How much do we set aside for Camp Calumet for the sixth grade annually? About ten thousand? So we already do it for one class, Steve. How do you do it for one and not the other? I'm just, you know, it's okay that they brought, I think it's, it's okay that they brought it forward. We don't have to say we approve it, but, I mean, I could see if we do for one educational trip, why wouldn't we help with another? I'm not saying right or wrong, but I'm just saying that we do do it for others.
Well, maybe that's something that should be addressed in the future also. I mean, you know, the kids will learn far more if they work. If someone were, people don't learn anything from a handout. They don't. If you work for something, you have pride in that. You, you take ownership of it. If someone just says, here's another government program, the kids learn nothing. So...
These kids have been working in fundraising. I've headed a lot of these fundraising opportunities and things that these kids have been doing personally. And they have been for a couple of years now because they thought they would be in the negative after their Calumet trip because they're such a large class. We started fundraising two years ago. They're not lazy. They're working. I'm behind them, pushing them, guaranteed. If you look at all the different fundraisers they have planned, you know, they're raising the majority of that money themselves.
How many months away would this trip be?
April of twenty seventeen.
How many months? I had...
All months.
Oh, sorry.
A year and a half, so...
Eighteen months, maybe?
Eighteen months, approximately.
All right. So if they did eighteen car washes, one a month, there's, there's no car wash in town at all. I believe once a month, probably two hundred and fifty people would show up and give you twenty dollars a car, to get the car washed. So right there, instead of doing just one car wash, perhaps do eighteen, and that's nine thousand dollars.
I think seasonally, you're limited to when you can do car washes.
Well, in the winter time, people want to get the salt and stuff off their vehicles.
In the winter time, we don't want our children up there freezing cold water.
All right. Okay. It's just an idea.
I, I thank you for the idea, but I think, you know, they're definitely trying. They're definitely putting lots of work into this.
But that idea could be transformed with all of these efforts, and I appreciate these efforts. I, you know, one hat day, or eight, eight hat days, you could, you could do eight selling the snacks or eight magazine fundraisers. I, I don't know, but it just, I think would be a great opportunity for the kids to go out. I mean, the idea of, you know, danger and stuff like that, that, that doesn't sit right with me. I would never discourage these kids from working towards this goal, to go into Washington DC and having that experience. But working towards this goal is something, like Steve says, it's, it's going to be better for the children. Taxpayers, not all the taxpayers, you know, not all the taxpayers are going to, to see anything at all other than a larger tax bill. And to ask, ask all of the taxpayers without anything other than a new tax bill, it's kind of hard. There's people in town struggling now to make their ends meet, mostly elderly. Most of their kids and grandkids have already gotten through the system. All they have left is their home where the tax bill increases. So I would love, I, I think our, our action that we've already taken was to, you know, encourage the fundraising and let's see how far that gets you. And then if there's a shortfall, then we'd have a discussion of what we could do to help. And I think that was a reasonable motion. It was approved by everybody. And, and eighteen months from now, you know, I mean, sixteen months from now, maybe...
You don't just go back to the late at that point?
No, I don't because I, I can think of a few folks in town, individuals in town that, that may hear the thing, you know, we need five thousand dollars, we need two thousand, we need ten thousand dollars. Somebody in town I can think of might cut a check for that themselves, just to, just to be able to help out. Something that they've earned and are willing to share.
We would have to have a commitment prior to sixteen months, and probably thinking more along the lines of January, February, or next year to confirm it, having done this trip with this company before. It's, they, they absolutely, we have to put a deposit in. It will be non-refundable. At some point, it's going to have to be an absolute commitment.
Well, how about ten car washes instead of eighteen?
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I'm just looking at, when, when is too late to make that commitment?
When is the deadline for the commitment?
I have to take a look at the contract, but I'm just saying in the past, I'm looking at, having, had this before.
I think we probably...
Probably January, February, I believe, of the year.
Of, of the...
Yeah, so seventeen.
So we'd have to follow more of the year.
Fourteen months.
Well, yes. Yeah, typically, typically, we'd even stop planning a trip like this until about, you know, August, September. That's how I would tell them.
Right, but then the, the financial commitment would be January of twenty seventeen, you say?
Probably, yeah.
January, February of seventeen. So there's plenty of time to see what could be done as far as fundraising goes between now and then.
I, I have to agree with what you guys are saying. We got a year or more to see what they can come up with for more than halfway there for the total of twenty, more than halfway there, for the twenty-five thousand dollars or twenty-two I can put at four forty-five. So I think we should just look at that a year from now and see, see what we have. Maybe they'd be surprised us and be past that goal and, and go for that. I don't think we should jump the gun right now.
Is there, do we have on record what that formal motion was so that we can accurately reflect it to you and your student? Or the student that's here? So do you remember what that motion was? I, I'm pretty sure that we encouraged you folks to do your fundraising and then towards the time to decide what it was. I'm not absolutely sure that that's what the motion was, but I think we said, do all your fundraising you can, and then we'll see if we need to help, how we can help. Does that sound right?
So when do we come back to revisit this in fall? Is that too late in the fall?
Next fall? One, twelve months from now would be great, I think.
It needs to be from the travel agent, so we can't, you know, if we're going to be ten thousand dollars short, we're going to be responsible for those monies regardless if we book that trip.
Just stated with January, February of twenty seventeen, that you'd have to make a financial commitment to the company. So sometime prior to that.
We're ten thousand short now. Am I correct in that?
No, we don't, no, we're, I don't know.
So, you know, the seventh grade, I'm not sure how much money they currently have in their accounts in the low thousands. That's, that's what we project to do.
This is projected. This isn't an actual of what you have. This is what you hope you can do.
That's based off of the fundraisers that we've done in the past, you know, like the top one, our, our number one is the eighth grade auction, and that's, so we, sometimes we do a little better than that. Sometimes we don't. It depends on the year. So those, that, what you, the document you have, those are all projections. They're not, yeah, they're definitely not set in stone.
Mr. Tressi, go ahead.
I would just recommend that the eighth grade team keeps, obviously, meticulous accounting on the fundraising piece and determine early enough if they need to come to the board in order to request any additional funds. You know when the deadline will have to be met, just make sure that you come in front of the board in a timely manner if you're going to request any additional funds. It's hard to make that determination around the table this evening, not knowing specifically when you have to commit as well as what your anticipated fundraising costs are going to be. So just bring it forward in a timely manner so that the board can make a decision at that point.
So I want to bring it to you now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Maybe, maybe come back a few times through the year and say, you know, this is where we stand now. Fundraising, you come up with another three thousand dollars or whatever, and keep us informed of that too, so that might help.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on this? Has, has anything happened yet, Mr. Soul? Have you done any of these events yet?
Half did so far. We're going to be operating a table at the Santa Breakfast Event this weekend. A lot of those events at the eighth grade auction, that takes place the eighth grade year. Right now, the eighth grade is working towards their Boston trip. So, yeah, some of that is coming up either in the, in the next few months or some of it is coming up mostly in their eighth grade year and next year.
You, you're fully aware of our PEG channel, that you could host these events on, on the local Channel Three. Will you commit, make sure that is posted there because a lot of folks are sitting at home watching that?
Certainly.
And if you need a spot for car washes, I, I'll help out with that.
Okay.
I'll give you the soap.
I'll, I'll give you the soap, the water, and the rags.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
I expect to clean the truck.
No, just kidding.
Cafe Services Quarterly Report.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Cara Green. I think we've all met.
You want to sit down up here?
You guys don't even have to stand. Go over to a chair if you want.
This is my car lot.
I have a question for you before you start. On the letters, Nathan gave us copies of the letters that go home. Who sends the letters home? Who mails them?
So I print them and fold them and put them in envelopes and deliver them to the office to be mailed out. And that's usually done weekly unless it's a shortened week like the holiday weeks we have. And on those weeks, I do not send out letters because typically they just got a letter and there's only been a couple of days of additional charges. And those letters do actually cost a lot of money to, to send out, so on short weeks, I, I don't send the letters out.
Okay. And I know that we, we approve these letters, right? We went through when we approved these letters. And I, I'm reading it, and I'm a little confused, and I read it a couple of times, and I'm still a little confused. One of the letters says additional milk provision that provided at lunch is not intended as part of the free or reduced meal program. One of the letters says students who qualify for free or reduced-priced meals are entitled to a full meal at breakfast and a lunch daily. Snack milk and lunch milk are not included. Are they or aren't they? Do these, these kids don't get milk with lunch, is that...
They get it with their...
Okay.
But additional milks are an additional cost.
Right, right.
If they want snack milk, wake in the morning with their snack...
Yeah, I get that.
They can't, they can't eat them if it's on.
Okay, all right. I'm a little confused. I just want kids to get a milk. Go ahead.
So you send the first one out after roughly three, three lunches?
Yeah, so that first letter typically goes out from anybody with a, a negative balance of the three meal charge limit up to thirty dollars. And then once they hit thirty dollars, that's when it's categorized a second letter, but that's a, a delinquency letter, and that's when the second letter goes out, when they reach that thirty-dollar limit.
Okay, so by the time the second letter goes out, they, they have a balance of thirty dollars or more.
Correct.
But by the time that they get that letter and pay the thirty dollars or more, they have more of a balance. And it could be another ten, twelve, fifteen dollars.
It could, yeah.
So it's a vicious cycle.
If they get lunch, you know, five days a week, you're looking at over ten dollars in charges just for lunch. So by the time that next letter is generated, whether they've made a payment or not.
Right, because you, you may send that second letter out and not get paid.
Correct.
Until another letter goes out and actually...
Then there's typically a lot of times where we don't get payment on those delinquencies. Second delinquency letters, those amounts just keep increasing.
So the kids still, the kids, you still feed them?
They always get them. Yeah. We don't want anybody to go without nutrition throughout the day.
Well, based on the policy that we're following, it doesn't say, don't, it doesn't say they're not getting them again.
Oh, heavens, no. And we want to make sure that it's not a different meal than anybody else because the children should not be punished.
Exactly, and they get all the same options that all the other kids do.
They don't get to put a la carte and stuff like that on there, right?
No.
No one's, no one's liable to charge a la carte.
If you, if you have a negative balance, you can't make any a la carte charges. So that would include snack milk, and we're starting to expand the items that we're going to offer here.
All right, go back, go back, go back. You just said that if they have a balance, say a child brings a quarter in for milk, you take that quarter and don't give them snack milk?
No, there's, there's one account, so there's not like a separate snack milk account.
Oh, go on now, because maybe mom can't pay for lunch this week, whatever, but if she can give a quarter for a snack milk, then...
But snack milk costs sixty cents.
Sixty cents, no, but how do you not, I would not, I don't feel comfortable taking that.
I don't get what you said, you said it again.
They have balance.
If they have a balance.
They have balance, and the little kid brings in his sixty-five cents for a month's snack milk. But they don't get snack milk. The sixty-five cents goes against the balance, am I correct? So they take the money from the little kid and say, I don't know what you're doing, but you're not getting that.
What are we doing wrong? What are we doing wrong as a board that we're allowing that to happen?
How do we fix that?
How do we fix that? Like, what do other companies do? Because that's, that's kind of not okay with me at all.
So...
Personally, that's...
I take the sixty-five cents back.
I would too. I would be like, whoa, hold up. I'll drink from the fountain. Give me my money.
No, they don't because snack milk is usually, you pay for it, if I'm correct. You pay in the morning and they bring snack milk in the afternoon to the classes, Mr. Gregoire? Yeah.
Kids do that again.
Right.
But really, I mean, it's more a function of those balances that have grown than the kid, the actual sixty-five cent snack, or snack that has a negative balance, he can't get that snack. Because that's not happening that often. But really, your problem is those people carrying balances, especially the ones larger than three, four, five meals. That's really what the problem is, not necessarily that kid every once in a while that shows up with his money for snack milk and can't get it because he has that. What a lot of other districts do, there is more aggressive collection taxes, use a bad term.
Can you give us examples of that? Because I don't know if we know what those are.
One district that I work with had a letter, actually, I have two now, have a letter that was drafted by their lawyers, which is a formal letter, that goes home to the parents and lets them know that if they don't settle the account and then a certain amount of time, it will be taken to small claims court. I have another district that I'm just working on this situation with. We just started working with them this year, and they're considering using a collection agency.
Does that work?
Yes. The one, the first district I had that did the letter from the lawyer, it's about thirteen hundred kids in the district. They were averaging ten, fifteen thousand dollars a year in negative balances at the end. After they started the procedures with the letters and taking it to the small claims court, they typically end the year with five, six hundred dollars in negative balances. It's really punitive measures against the parents that really solve the problem.
Just a question on that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Once people found out that that would actually happen, the problem really took care of itself.
Thanks.
How else is everything else going?
Very well.
The what?
Grilled cheese.
I don't eat cheese, so I'm not...
No, the grilled cheese sandwich, that's what you want.
Go ahead.
I didn't know, that would be Miss Mary. Cheese's on, on the board.
She can't say, grilled cheese isn't grilled cheese, let's just cut to the chase. You guys don't grill it.
It's baked cheese.
It's baked.
And typically, we have like a griddle, and we could do them on a griddle, but where we do two-hundred-plus meals a day, I'd have to have somebody come in at three o'clock in the morning and start.
Well...
You know, it's just two-hundred grilled cheese.
We can, we can learn how to use cheese, actually.
It's, yeah, and the thing is, we want to try to do batch cooking, so, let's say, the first lunch, they're getting a nice, at least a baked grilled cheese, and the fourth lunch is not getting a grilled cheese that was baked at that first lunch, it's now over a half an hour old. So, they try to do batch cooking as well, but with the volume that we do in lunches, and that's a pretty popular lunch, it's a difficult one to achieve, just...
We will, I have some regional chef managers that do some training on this kind of stuff, and I can have one of them come out, come out and help out, and help you with the logistics of that.
Sure. Believe it or not, that's the only problem I heard, I heard.
Honestly, that has been a battle.
That's the only thing we heard, that's not bad, that's pretty good.
And that really has been a battle, and we've had...
I shouldn't say, you guys are doing a good job.
We've had quality control, when we had tried to go the other way and actually grilled them, we found like we're burning a lot of, like, a lot of product gets burnt, because you're trying to flip a lot at one time and get two-hundred-plus grilled cheeses done in a certain amount of time, so one kid's not getting a solid grilled cheese, and it's just, obviously, you wouldn't want a baked product, but that's definitely more consistent what, than what they would have got if we did the typical grilled cheese. So, we do need a little help in the grilled cheese category, but I, I, we, we do, but...
Helps on the way.
So, that's the one complaint, we can deal with that.
That's, yeah, grilled cheese is crazy.
So, we did, I just did a recap for you, like we did last year, so we just went over the current, the current state of the department, so Kim continues to be the lead, site lead here. We have one new staff member come in this year, and the three of them seem to be working up great, and they continue to work with Brian. So, promotions, so we've offered a stir fry, it was a stir fry on the line station, it wasn't the full out in the, in the cafeteria table set up, but it was right on the lines. We did that in October. We have a pasta station, that's actually next week.
Next week. That'll be our first big action station for the kids.
That'll be the whole goal one. We have a Chinese New Year action station coming up on the calendar, and then, we would like to plan the grandparents' day again, the grandparents' luncheon, and definitely collaborate with the school, making sure that that happens a little more organized this year.
I don't want grilled cheese during the... You're not grilled my cheese, I don't want it.
Yeah, exactly.
Typically plan that day on the big meal day, too, so...
Exactly.
And I just want to mention one thing with, with Tara mentioned about the stir fry station on the line. That's one of the things we're starting to move into this year, because, you know, we talked about last year, the cost of our action, action station setup, and the cafeteria clash, all that kind of stuff. The only complaint we've ever got about that is we don't do it up. So, what we've started working on this year is like the stir fry station, and the Asian buffet that she mentioned, there's also a Chipotle-type concept to do for Rios to order on the line. We're moving into more of those action stations right on the line, to make it possible to do them more often. We'll still do the whole big show every once in a while, but this allows us to give them more of that experience more often in the year, at least a few times when we actually do the base whole.
What's the Chinese New Year?
So, just to celebrate Chinese New Year, it'll be more of an Asian buffet.
It's, yeah, it's like an Asian buffet, where the older kids will be able to come through and pick out different items, and the younger kids will actually get their meals in little Chinese stakeout containers.
Dumplings.
You have trouble with the grilled cheese dumplings, maybe?
Pork and leek is good.
Do you have any options that you can recommend for, for the end of the day, when you, when you have leftover food? What do you typically do, what do you typically recommend to do with those food wastes?
Yeah, so, a lot of times, we can repurpose items, and we always try to repurpose as much as possible. We have some districts, I was actually just talking about this, that we have local farmers that come in and take, take any leftovers that are unusable, and it's theirs.
So, pig swill's not out of the question?
Oh, no.
Nope.
Not at all, farmers do it daily.
And we, we actually have very little waste, Kim is really good about, we get like number counts, so they're kind of like a guideline. So, it's, it's really easy to kind of control how much food we're producing at one time.
And then, you know, in terms of not only kitchen scraps, but scraps from the cafeteria as well, we do work with a lot of schools that either work with an outside organization to compost, or do composting right on-site. Those are typically schools doing school gardens, that kind of stuff, but I'm not sure if there's one up and running here, but that type of stuff is always a possibility, so...
Do we know what our waste level is here? Do we?
I don't think we can measure.
Could we?
I think we should do that. We've talked about the golden, you had like a golden bucket challenge, or, so you can have the, the lunches compete against each other in the waste category, and see who has the least amount of waste at the end of the week.
They actually do that, or they've done it before, and it could be before you were here, is that they actually had a clear bucket set out for each, each grade level, and what it did, I, I think they had five, so it showed the beginning of the week.
Yeah.
And how much waste was in liquid and solid, like the milks, the juices were all in one, kind of a bug juice combination of yuck. And then, by the end of the week, it was like, oh, it was gross, it was like down to nothing, because they saw how much waste they had, and they had an opportunity to say, no, thank you, or no, thank you helping.
Sure.
Rather than a big portion, so, it was kind of neat to see how they went down, and whoever like had the least amount of waste, I think they had some like grand lunch.
And I think we, we had spoken about a giant sub, I think.
I, yeah, I think we...
We had spoke about something...
I think we talked about that in the wellness committee.
That's right, that's right.
That they would have like that big sub choice with the baked chips and the cookies and...
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, you know, I do have, starting in January or February, we have a couple of dietetic interns from UNH who'll be working with some Cafe Services accounts, so I could possibly get you guys some help in doing some promotion and kind of making a whole, you know, kind of thing out of it as well.
Yeah. Bring that to the next wellness meeting, that would be great, they would love to hear about that.
Sure.
So, à la carte items. So, as we discussed last year, so we're currently offering chicken burgers, cheeseburgers, hot dogs, chicken nuggets, and additional pizza throughout the week, so those will be additional options for those grades five through eight that we discussed that we would do last year. So, we're, we're currently doing that, and the kids seem to be enjoying it. So, in December and January, so Brian's ordering some stuff, so, so we're going to start offering something like fresh baked cookies that they can buy, but these are all à la carte items. So, you get into that, kids that have, it, it can help promote kids getting their bills paid, because they have to buy those things. So, those things, separate from the milk, they definitely cannot buy, I have a dollar to buy a bag of chips, but I can't pay my lunch bill. So, you know, if it becomes an issue, then we can definitely discuss it, but it's always a good option to give them, to offer more items. So, we'll be bringing in some, some bottled hundred percent juice and then bottled water cell as well. And then, smart snacks. One of the things that was brought up in the surveys, we'll go to the survey results quickly, but, is ice cream. The kids really would like to have ice cream as an option, an à la carte option, and we do have some smart snack ice creams that are available. You know, a lot of schools start with maybe one or two days a week where they can buy ice cream, so it doesn't get out of control, so we'd really like to talk about you, because they're asking for it.
Have you ever done the juicing bar?
Juicing, no, but smoothies, yes. So, with yogurt and, which is something that Brian already bought the mixers to start with.
Yeah, bought the blender, so we're going to start doing that next week.
Good, maybe get him to eat berries and stuff that are really known to him.
Yep. So, the survey was done, the survey was posted from November ninth through the twentieth, we even extended it a little while. We received a hundred and twenty-two responses, and, so the basic five questions are here that were on the survey. The staff is friendly, so seventy-five percent agree or really agree that the staff is friendly. Food is good, so forty, forty percent agree or really agree, forty percent had no opinion, and there was under ten percent that disagreed that the food was good. How often do you buy lunch? Thirty, eat lunch every day or most of the time, and twenty-three percent of the kids who responded don't ever even eat lunch, so, yes.
Want to put a U in there between the B and the Y?
Oh, he spelled that for me.
I didn't have my glasses.
Twenty-three percent of the kids never eat lunch?
Twenty-three of twenty-nine to twenty-two.
Twenty-three percent of a hundred and twenty-two said they've never eaten lunch.
I, I think we're in a phase of really, I think we have a lot of parents that are organic and whole foods, and maybe find it easier to make sure their kids eat all day if they have specifically what they like.
Yeah.
I think that goes in waves.
The other thing is, too, that that percentage really isn't that uncommon. You know, typically, what you see is, in terms of the percentage of your students participating, eighty percent of both free and reduced category students typically participate on any given day. Paid students, it's usually fifty percent, in that range, anywhere from forty to sixty, averages out to about fifty. Because the also, the other thing you have to think about, too, is, not only do paid students have, might have other choices, but even for people who can't afford to pay for lunch and don't qualify for free or reduced, doesn't mean they can afford to pay for it every day.
And then, the favorite items, obviously, tacos, mac and cheese, chicken nuggets, and they all love the action stations, they really want more made-to-order options. So, we are going to start adding weekly, we're going to turn the deli bar into a taco buddy station, which I think we could move along. I'm not kidding you, almost every single kid put tacos on there, so, just wish that deli bar over once a week would be great. And then, like I said, the ice cream, they really want the ice cream.
It didn't say grilled cheese.
No. So, meal counts, I just gave you a, a brief overview of where the meal counts stand, between thirteen, fourteen, I didn't change that, it was, yeah, sorry about that. It's fourteen, fifteen, this year, fifteen, sixteen. So, as you can see, breakfasts have really gone up, which is great, we want kids eating breakfast, it's really important, and lunches have stayed pretty steady. And then, there at the bottom is your current negative balance compared to last year's negative balance ending.
So, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
You guys had a glitch, I guess, in your system at the beginning of the year?
There were, there were quite a bit of issues at the beginning of the year, there were some server issues that we were dealing with, which affected how the POS systems operated. And then, at the beginning of the year, on the inputting of the free and reduced applications, there was a, a grace period between the time that the application is processed to the time that the actual new eligibility was put into effect, and we had made some changes, but working with Nathan through the SAU department, we had fixed all of that, so...
We have everything cleared out, these negative balances are...
They're all where...
They're all reflective of real negative.
And it actually never really affected the negative balances, it just affected our understanding of how to classify someone as free or reduced at the beginning of the year. So, it really didn't affect the balances at all, which caused a little bit of confusion on my part, and working with Nathan, we got that squared away pretty quickly, it took a couple days. And since then, we have new POS systems, and we haven't had any issues with the POS systems operating the way they're supposed to on the line. So, ever since those new systems have been put in place, everything's been running great.
You spoke about the, the attorney and the small claims, did you get any feedback on using the collection agency?
That particular district hasn't started yet, I actually just met with them last week, we just started working with them this year, and when we were reviewing the options, it was one that this business administrator, a coworker, was on her own. I don't have any other school districts that have worked with a collection agency yet, so I don't know. When I can, when we do our next report, if she goes out rude, I can let you know how it's going.
Good job.
See you next quarter.
Thank you.
Or maybe for Chinese New Year.
Well, don't forget, you come in for the action station, too, if you like, we do have an open adult sale button.
When is the pass up for that one? When is the pass up, next week?
It's next week on the night.
The ninth?
Yep.
It's just grilled cheese.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
How many grilled cheeses? Wouldn't it be even? Yuck. Nathan, bank fees, did we get that, did we get those questions answered?
We're in the process of it. I spoke to Keith Pike, a member of T Bank, Monday, and we went over the structure, and it reminded me that the interest that we get for our balances, it covers some of those fees, but it doesn't cover all of them, so we're not getting more, we're not getting additional income from the interest as of yet. That's why you're not seeing it on the revenue report.
So, they don't separate those issues, they blend it?
We, we would, if we were getting a, a positive balance on the interest, we would be putting it in, in the revenue account.
Once the fees are paid.
Yes, but at this point, we haven't. But he is working on restructuring our, Evan, to get the fees, and I will report to you back when, when I get some.
Okay, do we know how long he's going to take to do that? Because I just think the business, if, to find a amount of it feeding up the interest...
He wants to do it by the end of this month, because that's when the report closes.
Okay.
So, we're looking in the next couple of weeks to hear, hear what he has to, to give back to us, report back to us.
I mean, if it's eating up the interest that we could be making on our accounts, that's, that brings it above and beyond if it's actually being reported, so, that's totally not acceptable. You wouldn't allow that in your own private bank account. I can't imagine you're okay with it being on our business accounts.
Right.
So, anything you can do to give them a good swift kick to move it along?
I have permission to do it.
Would be appreciated.
Okay, I'll report back to you on that.
Thank you.
As soon as I hear something.
Don't you worry, you know I'll bug you. Now, internet and phone, did you, who did that? Did Ava do that?
I, I looked around, called Venture Cast, they, they don't service this area. AT&T and Verizon only do wireless.
Can I see that, those invoices? Because there's one in there, actually, from Time Warner, that speaks volumes of what we pay.
Okay. And then, Time Warner's the one that we currently have, and I called them, and I noticed that Joe Williams had found a phone line we weren't using, so we got rid of that one. And when I spoke to the, the representative, all he could do right now is lower it at five dollars a month. So, but he did say that next month, we were going to have new promotions, so I'm going to call him back next month.
How about you talk to his boss, and if you don't like what that boss says, you talk to his boss's boss.
Well, actually, no, they have a, okay, they have a company, within their company, and most companies that do this have what's called a retention center.
So, but he did say that next month we were going to have new promotions, so I'm going to call him back next month.
How about you talk to his boss, and if you don't like what that boss says, you talk to his boss's boss.
Well, actually, no, they have a, okay, they have a, they, within their company and most companies that do this have what's called a retention center.
That's exactly the person I thought.
Yeah, you need to keep, keep on it with the retention center, because that's where you're going to get the most.
Did you check with Fairpoint?
I did not.
Because they have, they have internet service and phone.
In this area?
In this area. And one of the pairs, from what I've seen, you're almost better off switching every year or every two years. Because they always seem to give the best deals to new customers. Maybe if you called Fairpoint and see what they would charge as for internet and phone. I know they're usually higher on the phone, but we're, we don't have them for internet. We'd be a new customer, they may give us a better price on it.
All right, I'll follow up on that.
Did you say Fairpoint? The only problem that you might see with that is that they can't offer the same. Remember, we just updated how much comes in the broadband? We just updated the broadband coming in, and I know Time Warner can offer that bumped-up broadband, but I don't know if Fairpoint can.
Oh, it'd be one of the questions.
Yeah, because, I mean, so right now, we're paying for six lines and.
What's that price?
Internet. It's five eighty-three.
That's, it's now five, that included the one we just.
So, for five hundred dollars a month, we have internet and six phones?
Five phones.
We have five now, yeah.
Five phones and internet?
We just got rid of that, that sixth one.
But that's perfect?
That's really not.
Yeah, we just recently called. Yes, it will.
Really not that bad.
It's thirty, yeah, thirty-five a month.
Thirty-five a month, yeah, that's really not that bad.
I will call Fairpoint and see what happens.
And just keep on telling the Time Warner people, I mean, it's okay to call and ask them every.
And find out what the promotions are.
Yeah, the promotions.
Don't laugh, I do it. Every year, I renegotiate my stuff.
I do too, probably every six months.
I think it's tied here, every six months, I bump it to a year. All right, enrollments.
I have on your page thirty-three, your packet, the updated enrollment says November twenty-fourth. You see at Paul School, we're four hundred thirty-seven students. Spalding, we have one hundred and sixty-one students, Kingswood seventeen, which gives us a total of six hundred and fifteen students. Also see the missing residency form numbers of Paul School of thirty-three and Spalding seventy-eight, which ties into item number, item letter B under seven for residency forms. The high school families are receiving a letter, and they have by next Friday to turn in their forms, and then the list will go to our truant officer and do some home visits.
Great.
So, that's update on A and B.
You have to send the letter out.
All right, next, the next item, the injury reporting procedures is a question that came up through the manifest discussion last, last meeting. The way the injury reporting procedures are to operate correctly is that if there's any employee or student that's injured, that should be reported immediately to the school nurse regardless of the injury. And then, that should be immediately processed to the SAU office, and the SAU office has five days to report that. So, it's a matter of making sure that, getting a timely report, not only from the employee and the student to the nurse, but from the nurse to the school office to the SAU, because if once it gets to the SAU, we process it within five days.
I have a question. The workers' comp insurance that we carry, do they not do that? Because most of them now that I've dealt with, I mean, I completely deal with, whoever carries the workers' comp, they have an eight-hundred number. You call them up and say, yeah, this is what happens. They take care of your state reporting. We take care of all of that. You just have someone take the initial report, dial the eight-hundred number, give me the information, and your workers' comp can take care of all of that, so it's never late, and they're responsible for fines if it is.
And that's the call that goes from the SAU office to workers' comp. So, the report comes from the school to the SAU. The SAU makes the call within five days.
So, we just didn't make the call?
It didn't make it to the SAU office. The rest of the process will be the time the injury happened.
And that procedure, you're hoping to follow, that's policy or law?
Well, if you, if you don't, I assume it's a policy for who provides a workers' comp for the five days. I don't know if it's actually a law.
It is a law. You have, you have so many days to report an injury to the state. It has to be filed.
Isn't it a category for reportable injuries?
It has to be, there's two, right, there's, it has to be a reportable injury. You know, somebody gets a paper cut, that, that doesn't count.
I mean, if you're saying you want that to be reported to you guys or to school?
Yes, because.
That's not reportable to, to the.
It all depends on what you guys consider.
A paper cut, if it gets infected, it can happen. So, we were blessed that any injury that potentially, you know, could be part of a workers' comp claim, be reported. You never know. So, that's the process.
Okay.
The reason why we have to do the last manifest was to report it, use communication from the school and the SAU.
Thank you. Assessment schedule?
On page thirty-four, you see I spoke in the past couple meetings about reducing our number of assessments within the school. So, you can see that what's been provided to is what we, the current assessments for per grade and when they're administered, and then where we're moving to reduce the total number of assessments our students take. If you look under the proposed assessment, so you can see the reduction in the number of assessments. Still providing data points for teachers to use to drive instruction, but just not as much testing as we've been doing in the past and currently, so we're looking to make those changes soon.
You use the word testing. Is it testing or is it assessing?
They're considered standardized tests, assessments. You can use the two terms.
Interchangeable.
Interchangeable. It's considered assessment.
So, assessments, assessments don't gather school grades, but testing does. Is that the difference?
No, there is.
They're not achievement tests, they're assessments.
There's not really a difference between term testing and assessments. A test is used as a form of assessment.
And you had said at the last meeting, Michael, that smarter balance is the only one required by overall?
Yep, grades three through eight, and SATs are now going to be for grade eleven, but that's not applicable here, except for our high school students.
Indeed.
And Nate, when selected.
So, what would happen if we got rid of everything except the smarter balance and name?
Well, particularly, you want to have some sort of assessment in K through two, particularly because the smarter balance doesn't apply to K to. Those, those AIMS Web assessments provide basically a skill set for mathematics as well as reading. You want to be able to determine based on a standardized assessment where students fall for their mathematics and their reading skills. And as for grades three through eight, you want to, you can see that we, we broke it down to just do NWA in the fall for grades three, five, and seven. And the purpose of that is to get a baseline on what the students are coming into that grade level with, because they wouldn't have, NWA would be the first time a third grader would see an assessment based on standards. So, that's why we wouldn't have that data point of a third grader coming in in the fall, because they just do AIMS Web up until then, which isn't a standards-based assessment. So, we minimize the number of standards-based assessments by spreading them out through grades three, five, and seven. And at this point, I wouldn't recommend eliminating all assessments except for smarter balance, because those data points are used by teachers to drive instruction. They discuss those assessments. However, I'm a big advocate for minimizing the number of assessments, which you can see here, they've been minimized dramatically.
Ralph?
When did smarter balance assessments get accredited by the New Hampshire DOE? From what I understood, maybe I'm wrong, but this type of standard smarter balance assessments was supposed to be accredited or approved or validated. When did that occur? It didn't occur, but they're mandated.
Right.
How does that happen?
Well, because the DOE can make up its own rules.
Is that your opinion, Mr. Brown?
No, that's, that's a matter of, if you do, if you do some research, Mr. Ford, you'll find, if you find, he's going to go.
Bonnie, do you have a question?
Teachers assess every day in the classroom, am I correct?
Yes, well, yes.
Every day, every day, formally or informally, they're gathering information that best fits the twenty, seventeen to twenty-five, twenty-eight kids they have in their class. So, if they're, if they're gathering information on a daily basis, and they know what level their kids are at and what their success rate at, is, is, do you really feel that there's a strong need to do that one test that is just a snapshot that may not reflect demographics or particulars, learning styles? I mean, what, I understand that you need to assess kids, but the teachers, our great staff does that every day with every child they come in contact with, whether it's two seconds or five minutes, they're doing it. And how do the staff feel? Like, do they feel like it's too much? I mean, I, I hear what administration is saying, but what do the teachers feel like? It's like, we don't ever get their opinion. Like, are they like, wow, this is just too much? Or, you know, this test is great, but the information is a snapshot, and other than giving a report to the parents, it doesn't do me any good in my classroom. Or they, this is amazing stuff. It helps me plan my next year's curriculum. It helps me know what kids are on target, how to better my plan. Like, I, I guess, I see that it should happen that way every day in the classroom anyway, so is it an asset to the? What is the staff's point of view?
I, I agree with you, and the feedback from the staff, I don't think you find a teacher who'd say, that would say that we're not assessing our students enough. I think that what we've done here in reducing the number of assessments is on the positive side for what the staff would like to see. I'd be hesitant to eliminate all of the assessments of the smarter balance without further input from the teachers. I know that what we have here would, would meet approval to the point of we have minimized these assessments, but to get rid of all of them except for what's required of, we would need more feedback from the teachers in order to do that. The ideal practice is to move towards performance-based assessments, and that's classroom assessments. However, in order to move forward with performance-based assessments, you're talking about competency-based education, which we have a lot of work to do, you know, but. So, right now, I think minimizing it to the assessments that are on this, this schedule is a good starting point as we move forward toward performance-based assessments.
Steve?
How much time are we spending on these? Because the smarter balance is up to sixteen weeks. How many, how many, how much time are these other ones, tests?
Sixteen weeks?
Up to sixteen weeks.
It doesn't take that long at the school, but you have that window, it's sixteen weeks.
I believe we, we did nine this, this year, nine weeks of testing, the smarter balance?
It's broken up. It's, you know, certainly it's not, every student's testing every day or even every week. It's, we break it up just to kind of minimize the bandwidth, because it does take an awful lot of bandwidth in the building so that it can get, the system can get very laggy when, if we tried with every student who had to do the smarter balance on the same day, it just would bar our system down. So, we had to break it up over the course of time. So, no, the kids that haven't done in a few days at each grade level. Eighth grader had it done in five days, four days. But, you know, kids who start eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade, all the way down the line, break the schedule, most likely do NWA, do the same thing.
Does that cause a lot of anxiety with the kids?
Well, in the past, we've had incentives for the kid. Kids get excited, we have an assembly talking about it. I, I think it is anxiety, but we can have to do a big test. Anytime they do a big test, and you get nervous about what you do and what you don't know, and feel a lot of pressure on themselves.
Yeah.
I think on that question, Bonnie, you might not see as much anxiety as you would see fatigue with our current, you know, testing schedule. So, you know, if you look at what the eighth graders would go through, if they are potentially selected for NEAP as well, I think that's, it's substantial amount of testing. So, that, in my opinion, that's just, that's testing fatigue.
Okay, fourth and eighth and.
So, that's why if you can look the difference between what we currently do and what's proposed, it's substantial reduction in the amount of assessments to minimize that fatigue, which also minimizes the anxiety on the assessments.
If you look at the grade and look at the spring, 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 April, you know, February, and you might have, the eighth graders, I would never want to blame that on results, but I have to look at that big while. Might work if they had to quit at the end of the year, because they had to assess it.
I think you didn't answer my question. My question was, how much time are we spending on these tests? On these, the new proposed, how much time are the kids doing testing?
Well, NWA, I believe, is about sixty minutes per, per test, which is math and language arts. So, each student, what's that?
About five assessments.
Yeah. So, so each student there is.
Five hours, so an entire school day, basically?
Five hours throughout the entire year. And then, for smarter balance, I believe it's, let's see, ninety minutes? Ninety minutes on that assessment is the minimum?
Is it just one assessment?
It's math and language arts.
So, it's.
So, that'd be total, the two assessments would be around three hours.
Three hours per year?
Mm-hmm.
You said because of bandwidth, we had to reduce, like, getting it all done at once?
When we, when we do the smarter balance, what I'll do is, I'll say, there's no streaming video.
Well, no, I, I understand what you're saying, but is there a paper copy that would allow us to do it all at once? Because we have found out this year that even if you do things electronically, you don't get the results any faster. So, if we.
And that was because of the paper copy. So, we had districts that chose to do the paper copy and that held up the results, the state releasing us. So, the paper copy eventually will not even be an option.
Steve, how can they do that? What if you're just a poor town and you don't have the technology to do it? How can they, how can they mandate something that you can't afford to do? Steve? I apologize.
This is another one of the talking points in the Department of Education that were given to the superintendents to use as an excuse. Because the smarter balanced test is adaptive. You answer so many questions correctly, you move up. You answer so many questions wrong, you move down. Paper and pencil cannot be adaptive. A piece of paper cannot adapt the student to move the student up if they answer so many questions correctly, or move the student down if they don't answer the questions correctly. So, that's just an excuse to delay the test. You can't even compare the smarter balanced assessment from computer to paper and pencil. So, that was just a talking point given by the DOE. You can't even compare it to it. It's an adaptive test, and paper and pencil is not adaptive.
Chair?
Go ahead.
I think overall, we should be focused on our, our energy and the future topics around assessments towards performance-based assessments. Those are locally designed assessments by teachers. They're graded by teachers and moving in that direction.
I think you guys have done a great job cutting back on a lot of the, that's pretty, pretty good.
Thank you.
Do you need our approval to be done? It's just done?
It's just done.
Well?
I'm not sure if, it doesn't need our approval to be done. And I'm not sure if the DOE is actually encouraging local districts to have a hand in the testing. Just based on what I've seen, heard, it's hard to believe that the DOE is encouraging local patrol, you know?
That's Jersey.
They, they actually are, there, we have four, what are known as PACE districts in the state that are leading the, really leading the nation around performance assessments, and districts can opt in to be part of the PACE initiative, and the state has been leading the nation around trying to drive what, what would be considered local control around assessments, and the ANFRS at the forefront of that because of our, our current DOE.
Is that what my, my company dispenses, PACE?
You don't want your father PACE.
The DOE does.
DOE does. Super parent does, but we don't want PACE for our children.
I think PACE would be fantastic for our, for our district's performance assessments on competency education, and that's really, that's the direction education should be moving. That's true, true global control, as you are designing your own assessments, utilizing your own assessments to determine the growth of students based on your competency that you develop in this classroom instruction, classroom assessment.
How are we developing them when they're being handed down from Concord via, I mean, via Concord from Washington DC? How is that?
Your performance assessments aren't being handed down at all, that's the difference, that's where the ANFRS stands at the forefront, is they have been pushing for locally designed assessments, so, but I'm not here to argue about the DOE, the state, or the federal government.
It's just, it's in black and white.
Steve, go ahead.
Competency-based education, as we just heard, makes Common Core look good, and that, so that's not saying much, because Common Core is not good. Competency-based education is far worse for the children's future.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for another long, we'll have a long discussion on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Old business, waste management pricing. Did I skip one? Because if I did, I apologize.
We'll remove that.
We did?
The budget in Washington DC, we're good. So Bob Adams has done some, made some calls for waste management, and so here's some information we put together, so I'm sure he'll be happy to speak to it.
Like, before you get drilling into, into the chart, that's based on comparing some numbers that we already have in Milton, but I did call Waste Management and talk to our county representative. The only way we can reduce the cost of our trash with Waste Management and recycle is to either, one, reduce the amount that we generate, okay, which then we could, you know, change the container, okay, we do sit, or look at, opt in to change the container size, and one idea, one idea would be looking at a roll-off that we had talked about a little bit, so, so, because you, you have to go one of two ways, either change the container size, so you can change the frequency of pickup, okay, and, or you reduce the amount of waste that's going out of the building. If we do, if we, if we looked at changing, trying to pick up some of the items that can go into a roll-off container and consolidate and all of recycle, I just did a chart here just to extend things for you, so that if you look at that, recycle six yards at a frequency of once per week, you know, six yards, the cost is twelve thirty-eight, and then if I multiply twelve thirty-eight times six weeks, it gives you a six-week cost of seventy, seventy-four twenty-five. A thirty-yard container, taking all of what currently goes in a six-yard container, plus other items that could fit and get hauled out of here on a roll-call basis, would cost us three forty-two. You know, so based on that, it looked to me that it would cost us more if we were using a roll-off that way versus, I think the better, the better way to use roll-off would be if we had, you know, some project work or a lot of material to change, a lot of desks and chairs out or something like that, because we normally wouldn't have a lot of material to be able to fill that, that out.
So did you call any other providers in the area?
I have not. What I, what I need to know to be able to do that is what direction we want to take our disposal, so that I can get, basically get to a spec, so that then I can take that spec, and then I have, I can add that spec in for a whole document, to be able to do that.
Ralph?
Because I need to know what it is, you know, what it is that we want to do. Yeah, Ralph was trying to interject there.
I was just going to suggest, take the service you have now and make that your minimum expectation.
Okay.
And then you contact these other providers like Casella or Panard, or there's a half a dozen other providers of both waste management, not just waste management, and get a competitive bidding process going. That's the only way these people are gonna reduce costs. The issue that I see, the prevailing issue, is do we need to have anybody come in here with a private truck, or a pickup truck, or a rented truck, or a facilities truck, and spend time and money taking it to our transfer station? I don't think we do. I think we have the ability to put everything in one container, whether it's a roll-off or a six-yard or eight-yard dumpster, have it, one company pick it up, and it removes the possibility of any other accidents, cost of the tax pay.
Yeah, so I couldn't, basically, you know, recommend that at this point in time, as well as what Ralph had said, that that would be a baseline, don't change that, and if that's a spec, then I'm fine to go forward and I can put an RFP together and get that out there for you.
Steve, go ahead.
We currently have the six yards, right, love?
Yes.
Okay, so, but in the last, the last paragraph, it states that we can reduce our current cost, is that, so how can we reduce our current cost by the pickup schedule or container size?
Well, we have done that by managing it, in the last paragraph, I'm sure you had three numbers?
Right, I saw, so that's what, what you already thought, so there's no additional way to, that's what, the way I took it, there was an additional way to reduce the cost if we change the pickup schedule or the container size, but you're already saying that's already factored into this, is that what you're saying?
No, not, no, what I'm saying is, if we look at, at what we've had for a pickup schedule in the same-sized containers, by managing the times that it needs to be picked up, over time, we've been more aggressive doing that, Joe has, and reduce that, okay, to that number. So then our flex that we have is only to, I mean, trash we're gonna take out weekly for sure, okay, but if we, if we looked at as time went on, how to reduce that, what goes in the trash container, Ralph brought it up before, Caffey Services talked about it a little bit tonight, if we can make that ten-yard or an eight-yard, that impacts the cost, and you've shrunk that waste rate, okay, but that, that's down the road, right?
But we, but we have a six-yard, not a...
We have a ten-yard for the regular trash and a six-yard recycler.
Right.
So if we take current conditions today, back to Bonnie's point, we can get a baseline then through an RFP, okay, with other companies, and we'll do the call list like we agreed, okay, and commode it as well, so.
I guess, I guess, when we discussed this at the last, the last meeting, maybe I wasn't clear when I asked, or you didn't get it. I just thought that we would take what we have, make a few phone calls and get some competitive pricing to bring back to us.
That would be followed on a procedural basis.
I understand, but sometimes if you just take the initiative and save a thousand dollars for going out for an RFP, it just makes more sense. I, I don't, I don't think you need specific permission from us to pick up the phone, call the phone and call Casella or Panard or one of the other companies that deals with this and say, hey, this is what we currently use, what are your prices? I, I just don't think that we need to spend twelve thou, twelve hundred dollars to put an RFP in the paper when we can take five minutes out of our day, take the initiative, and just make the phone call and bring it back to us. You're not gonna get slapped around for breaking a policy, all I want is competitive pricing, that's all I, which, this is taking far too long for a dumpster. I just, and that's just my opinion, and the other board members can interject and say anything they like, but I just know that it takes five minutes. Call somebody up and say, this is what we use, what do you got for pricing? Call three or four different people, there's plenty, as Ralph said, there's plenty of waste management places out there that are not waste management. Call them up and say, this is what we got for pricing. Call Waste Management up and go, look, we can get this, this for, this cost, thus reducing our cost without changing anything, and bring it to us. There, it's that simple, I just, I, I don't, I don't think you're gonna get slapped around for taking initiative and just doing that, I really don't. Anybody else have anything to say?
You could, you could even tell them what we're paying, and they can beat this price, we might take a better price. I guarantee you somebody was gonna lower the price to what we're paying now.
It's just, it's taking too long to just get an answer, or we could just make a phone call. And I understand you want to follow policy, I really do, I just, I don't know who's supposed to negotiate that stuff, Nate's calling around to negotiate our other stuff, he's not doing our, he's just making the phone call, he's going, hey, this is what we got, what can you help us with? That's all I, that's all I want, I don't want the rest of the board members, but that's all I want, I just think it's easy, and just do it. I just think it's easier. Sorry, that's my rant for tonight. That's what I would like for you to do, I can't see wasting over a thousand dollars to RFP a dumpster.
Sounds good.
That's a huge waste.
Not a lot of trash companies out there, there's only like three or four.
There's three or four, and there's two.
What happened to mechanical RFP?
The bid walk is next Thursday.
It's on the board, right? It's on the board, you got that?
Oh, it's on the web, I'm not sure, I didn't look it up.
It is on the web, it's on the web.
I think it's on, I think I read it.
It's in the paper this week.
I think I read it on the board out there this week.
Did, are we taking the initiative, picking up phone?
We called seventeen companies, the front office, that we did research on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Warren Articles?
So what I provided for you in the packet on page thirty-five and thirty-six, you can see this is sample language, as well as put some preliminary numbers in there, I'll just go through with each article you'd like. Keep in mind, Article One would be your election of officers, Article Two would be any, any negotiation items, and Article Three would be to hold a, hold another meeting if Article Two was defeated, so that brings us right to Article Four, which is your, your operating budget. We made the adjustment to the one line in the health insurance that was brought up by the Budget Committee at our last meeting, which brought that bottom-line number down to nine million, eight thousand, seven hundred, fifty-eight dollars. We do not have the default at this point, that's why you see the X, X is in there for the dollars for the default. And then you can see the note that addresses the gross budgeting piece. So there's the sample, sample wording, this is the wording that we used specifically last year in Milton. And that's Article Four, so that, can't really, there isn't much you can do with this right now, except maybe have a conversation around the note wording, because the number hasn't been set by the Budget Committee, so it's one, preliminary wording, I shouldn't say wording, because that's, that's dictated by statute, but the number isn't set at this point.
Warren, this alleviates all the confusion that happened between the Budget Committee and the School Board's budget last year?
Yeah, you can see where it discusses specifically the amount that was put in there for federal, anticipated federal grant revenues of three hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars, and the specific wording in there says it will not be raised by taxation. That's the same on the note about the default. And then down to Article, Article Six, that's the ten thousand dollars for the roof repair placement and replacement, for the board at, aside from our last meeting. And then the next one, Article Seven, is the twelve thousand five hundred for upgrading the ball field. Then Article Eight, again, this is for the, for the parking lot, because we don't have monies for that right now, but that's what the sample wording would look like. I'm sure we can discuss that with the White Mountain Survey update agenda item. And then Article Nine is dictated by statute as well, that's the specific wording around the withdrawal. That's it.
Well, I want to make sure that Article Nine, we're looking at the same wording for last year, where we were not recommending, this year, I think we are recommending.
Yep, I apologize, I just copied and pasted that, so that would be the board recommends, Budget Committee recommends?
Well, we don't know what the Budget Committee does, but I know, I think I know the School Board's direction is taken.
Right, I just, but our takeout does not, so it's on, starts off on a positive note for you.
Pick up or whatnot, that's fine.
Steve?
These go by priority, should we, should we move the, or can we move the withdrawal up?
Priority and cost, I think, Steve.
It's money, it's money.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Steve, quite honestly, if it's not in appropriation in any way, I don't know if it goes in the priority list, that's why it's in the end.
But there is, what, forty-two thousand?
That's not in this article.
Only in budget.
In budget.
That's in Article Number Four.
Bonnie? Does the school district have the right to advertise for a vote? Like, how do we get the word out for Article Nine? Like, what's, other than, other than here and maybe, is it Mr. Miller? The public hearings, but we don't really have a large turnout for those, so how can we, you know, how can we?
ClearView will give an opportunity, I believe, from our last meeting, we had, the ClearView is looking forward to the opportunity, the Wakefield School District Representative of the School Board to sit and explain the articles to the voters, so perhaps some lucky individual on the School Board can be appointed to be that individual, and sit down with a member of ClearView Community Television and go over each article that's gonna be presented to the voters and, and express the will of the School Board, not necessarily their individual opinion, but the direction of the school.
On that question, I also think it'd be, I think it'd be potentially good for Article Nine if members of the withdrawal planning committee would actually present the plan on ClearView, so if you had an opportunity on ClearView to see the, to hear the plan as a presentation, prepare to just the article, so present the plan, in case they're not there at a public hearing, and they're not there at the deliberative session, you at least know what the plan reads.
That's a good idea. I wonder who we should invite to do that, for sure.
So those are your articles, the Article Five's not on there at this point, that's your SAU article.
What do you need us to do with this meeting?
What do you need us to do with this meeting?
Well, other than we'll add, probably add the vote of the Budget Committee on Article Nine, but after their vote on, what is it, next week or the week after they meet? Ten, next week, next Thursday.
It'd be great to be able to bring the articles as well as the, hopefully the final budget at that meeting for approval, because the final budget, that bottom line, if there are any other questions, and we're just plugging in the default number, and Article Four.
Doesn't that change with the contract?
No, that's a separate article. Negotiations, you mean?
Yeah.
That's Article Two.
Okay. Sorry, that's right, yeah.
So the board this evening could at least vote on your recommendation of the articles that have the figures in it, the board had decided on, like the ten thousand for the roof, the twelve five for the ball field. Could vote on Article Nine.
I thought we, us making the recommendation and voting on it didn't count as a vote on it, or we need to re-vote on the warrant article?
I think it's important to vote on the article specifically, because you're voting on the wording of the article in the sense that it has the figure in there, so I think it's important now to vote on the article itself.
I think it's also important to see that default number.
Yeah, I'm only talking about the ones that have, set, set numbers that the board's already decided on. I'm not talking, we shouldn't have any type of vote on Article Four this evening, because the numbers aren't set. Just the ones that the board's decided on. Then we can get those out of the way and at least present those to the Board Committee with your recommendation on it.
I think motion to recommend Article Six, Article Seven, and Article Nine.
As amended?
None of them.
Because it says does not, it should say does.
Right.
Yeah.
They're amending that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be, you could do it out of, that's what you wish to do.
I just want to make sure that wording's clear.
It, it will be, because you have to, the wording has to align with the vote.
Type of just saying.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay, White Mountain Survey Updates?
I sent everyone an email of the update from Jim Rhines, you might not have seen it yet. It has a proposed, he's made some adjustments to the proposed plan, I believe the only adjustments that he put in there according to his email was that he made the drainage basins bigger to take on a fifty-year storm, I believe.
Fifty-year storm event.
Fifty-year storm event. And he's meeting with Nate Fogg Friday morning, and then I asked for him to send me the plan after he meets with Nate, and I could send that out to the board for your review. Originally, I thought that he could present that to the board on December sixteenth meeting and then submit it to the planning board for December seventeenth, so that they could have the informational hearing on January seventh. However, Jim brought up the point that if the board wishes to make any amendments to that plan, there's not enough time between the sixteenth and the seventeenth, so I'd recommend, if you can, to meet with Jim for that approval of the plan some point next week. I'm, I'm unavailable all of next week, but you can meet with Jim. He's available Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week, anytime from five o'clock on. So I would recommend that you get an opportunity to see the plan, Jim comes and presents it to you for a quick meeting on sometime next week, and then he can bring that, submit that plan.
Ralph? Is the plan fresh in everybody's memory as far as what we had approved and then what was proposed with the, what we said work on the proposal that Jim brought to us in the last meeting? There was a, the plan that was approved, the paving actually getting a lot closer to the garage that Joe wants to utilize, and actually brought paving closer to the existing drive and further along that retention trench. And the presentation that Jim had given us kind of had like a shotgun curve, you know, further away from the building. And the idea that I had when I drew up that plan was, the closer we brought the pavement to that utility, well, Joe's utility room there, and then plowing the snow, I mean, there wasn't much sense that I could see in Jim's plan to move that pavement away from the building. I do understand what he was talking about as far as one way out, but again, those water shut offs are in that area that Dave Tivinson showed me and, you know, to, well, I just thought about the SAU building, so maybe that, perhaps that's why he made that amendment, that little shotgun thing, so.
Did you look at this? Do you want to look at this? The one that you just sent us? Do you have your iPad? Would you like to do this?
I would suggest Thursday.
I was just going to say, we should just set up a meeting, have him come in and bring us the plan and call it and do, and have that discussion.
That bring a little?
We can do that, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll send you, after he meets with Nate, he's going to send me the plan after he meets with Nate, and then I'll forward that out to the board, so you'll have between Friday afternoon or when he sends it to me all the way up to Thursday to review that plan, and then he'll come in and present it if you want anything changed. That gives him plenty of time to change it before he submits it to the planning board for the January seventh meeting.
But we're, we're already here Thursday night anyway with the Budget Committee at six.
Yeah, so we could do a five o'clock if everybody's available.
And what I had just seen addresses my concern about bringing the pavement closer to that building. It looks like it, it did get closer to that building, so that was the only big concern I had about.
So, is everybody available for next Thursday and we can do a formal budget meeting? You're not? You are?
I'm thinking five.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
When's our budget?
Six.
Yeah, they're always at six. That works for me.
That's a ten.
Mr. Turkey, if you can set that up for us, that would be great.
Posted.
And send us, can you send us a confirmation email, please?
That's, so.
Yeah.
Ralph, I, I think this would be under our business, and it's just our previous conversation, and I'm not looking for an argument, I just, I just would hope that when draft minutes are made, we all have an opportunity to look at draft minutes, and when we have our public meetings, that's when we amend, make changes. It's, it's hard for me to sit on a public board believing that it's okay to, to change the draft minutes prior to a discussion in a public meeting. I think that the intent is okay, but the method is not. So we have the process, or I always, the boards and the commissions I've sat on, we have draft minutes made and presented, we make amendments at a public meeting. I would like that to continue to be the practice, if at all possible.
Bonnie, I respect your decision. What I would like to see, I think Beth does a really good job, or Ms. Mary, they do a really good job of getting what they need to have in. What I'm saying is when you come into the meeting, have your items written down, so we're not like barking at her, we're, could you please add this to the minutes? And have it written out for her so that she's not, it's not a guessing game for her, is what I'm saying, Ralph. Because it's, it doesn't have to be verbatim for her or anybody, but if we can have that written down, even if it's a scanned in and a, yours is in red and everybody else is in yellow, or I might have something, you might have something, if we can be polite about, and I'm not saying you weren't, but if you can be polite about it and have it written out, it's easier, because we can all see what you want to add, and it doesn't make her feel like they did a bad job.
I want the minutes to be accurate, and if there's amendments made at a public meeting, not, not prior to, you know, if the draft minutes are available to everybody, I know I made notes, you know, what I wanted to address tonight, and I, I.
And those were put in?
They were, but I was somewhat concerned about the idea that, you know, if we have changes to the minutes, we have plenty of time to do that before a meeting, and that, that was, that was what I, I hope isn't the practice.
I don't know if any of us get the minutes before our packet.
Right, and, and sometimes you don't get your packet till Monday or Tuesday.
I'm just saying.
And sometimes you don't have the time to review, you know.
Well, I just think it's polite if we want to add a lot that we haven't written down to give to them, because we can't expect them to read our minds, is what, is, and you don't want to be disrespectful to the one that takes four or five hours writing up our minutes, is what I, my point was.
Any correspondence? Do you have a correspondence?
Well, I, that's, lack of correspondence, I guess. I understand Parks and Rec is going to go forward with their Santa's breakfast, which is great. I also understand that Wayne submitted a, a request for the use of the facility to, to you, Jerry. I believe Wayne expected, say the Parks and Rec director expected that to be brought to the school board, so we can discuss with him, whether we'd be waiving custodial fees and stuff like that. I had a discussion with Wayne over a month ago, he said he was willing to bring that to the school board, because he recognizes the fact, the Blue Pantry's done it, Red Cross has done it, the town itself has done it for elections and stuff like that, and he's, will be certainly willing to submit the paperwork, so that you could present it to the school board. And I would, I just, I'm curious why it wasn't presented to the school board, I know it was submitted prior to la- last week. So I know we all talked about adhering to policies as they're written and stuff like that, we had the discussion about who has the ability to use the, use the room and, and things like that, but there is a policy that these things, and I know you, you have the ability to okay things, there's no conflict in scheduling with any other group, you know, and that's basically, when we say that Parks and Rec has priority, it's generally a conflict in scheduling. So we've all discussed adhering to policies as they're written. The policy, the way it's written, is the school board approval, you can certainly recommend or approve or whatever without the school board, according to pass action, and Wayne's willing to comply with the policy. And I was looking forward to, to discussing it and congratulating Parks and Rec on, on another effort, all that stuff, and just, I had the opportunity.
Question, is a question that, that.
Why didn't we see the request?
Is it regard to, I, just trying to clarify, is this in regard to waiving a custodial fee?
Yeah.
I, I didn't, I didn't consider, I didn't have the, I don't recall having that distinct conversation with Wayne about the custodial fee or bringing it forward to the board for approval, but I don't know, I don't know if they have in the past for approval, so.
I'm the chair of the event, I can probably speak on it, and I think it, this is, I think it's personal, and I'm going to say that right away. This is our fourteenth year of breakfast with Santa. I am proud to say that Jerry and Joe work hand in hand with us, and the reason that we may not pay a custodial fee is because we clean up after ourselves. We don't ask them to wash the floors Friday, but they wash the floors Saturday, just like they would after basketball. We clean the kitchen, we mop the floors, we have volunteers that come in left and right and front and back, and this place is spit spot, locked down and left the way we left it, and we graciously compensate anybody who comes in to pitch in with a huge thank you. I think that Mr. Fogg is being a stir shit, and it's hurtful, because this is a great town event, and anything he can do to hurt me is good. And that's sad, and he can give kudos to Parks and Rec, but the people that put this on and give every penny and all of their effort to Parks and Rec are the friends of Parks and Rec, and we are thankful that we can work with Parks and Rec and give so much money and so much happiness to every family and every child that steps foot in that building on Saturday. And I am sorry, if you want to get me riled up about something, I will hit you fiercely with a defending of this, and how dare you be such a miserable, hateful person over a sixty-dollar janitorial fee that we would pay with no problem. And the reason it wasn't paid before is because it was in-house PTA and it was an in-school function. And it's not paid now out of the graciousness of someone else who pays the fee, if needed.
The taxpayers.
Me.
Bonnie, it's a policy.
Ralph, you are, the policy says that we have to ask permission. We have not asked for a waiver of custodial fees, because if it has to be paid, we're going to pay it. And your assumption is just ignorant and rude to the people that work so hard to have this event. It's just mean and hurtful and spiteful. And you know what? Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Fogg.
Bonnie, it's not meant to be, you just stated that you haven't made payment to custodial fees at all in the past.
Do you know why? Because it was PTA, and PTA is a building entity.
Well, it, it's good to have the excuses, but I, I, I know we all decided to go by policy as policy's written.
You're mean and hateful, Ralph.
I'm not being hateful.
You are, you're just, you're just mean and hateful.
Mr. Greg, did you get the request from Parks and Rec?
I got the request, I don't recall who needed the request.
But did you get the request?
I got the request.
And did you approve the request?
I didn't.
Did you waive the custodial?
I don't recall.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, it doesn't matter. If you guys have to bill it, send me the bill, I will come gladly pay you guys the custodial fee. Let's move on. Comments by the public?
No.
Ms. Johnson, please.
I have two questions. One was, when you were discussing whether or not to put the nine thousand in if we needed it for the Washington DC fund, right now is when you're making the budget for next year, which that sort of come in under. The way you left it without having that included, if you, they needed the money, would there be monies in your, in your budget that you're preparing for next year to help them with that money?
Well, that's certainly, certainly something we're going to have to look at further down the road.
They will have, they will have already been committed, but if it's not in our, our budget, then will that create a?
We'll look at that. We'll take a look at that.
My second question was for Article Four, in the warrant articles, for, for school operation budget. Are you going to have a special note in that underneath stating that there's a trans, forty-two thousand some odd dollar transition budget in your budget?
No. No.
Again, I say, it's in.
We don't need to put it in the warrant article, it's in the budget, anybody who gets a copy of the budget's going to see it.
What I'm saying is, it's in the budget, let's say for, for, you know, you're assuming that the warrant Article Nine is going to pass. I think that's an awful assumption to make. You're probably right, it probably will pass, but it's monies that if the, SAU warrant article does not import, it's monies you put in it in assuming it's going to go forth, and I think you need to be very upfront with the public that that money is incorporated under the school, under a school administration budget.
Thank you, we'll take that under advisement.
Otherwise, it's not being truthful to the public.
Just wanted to thank the board for hearing us tonight, as well as moving it up on the agenda as the accommodation to the student.
Thank you for keeping us in the loop, it's always good to hear. Thank you. Anything else?
So, I just wanted to try to jump ahead on the budget. Is there going to be any savings in the budget, because you're dumping Ames Webb for the fourth through eighth grade?
That's a good question.
So are you going to make that adjustment for the Budget Committee?
We'll get the number.
Okay, I just figured to, just to do it now instead of having to deal with it at that, at that point. And I know I hit you with that warrant article about the money that's put in the transportation expendable fund, trust fund, just before you walked in. Are you going to check with Tim to see if that, you should be putting money into that trust fund, or?
Go ahead.
Yes.
I don't either.
There's a current, what you're referring to is currently a trust fund for the purchase of a bus, I believe, or. or replacement of a bus, and I don't know the last time there was, monies were put into that trust, and I think there's still this question, is, you know, put monies into that, so, instead of putting it in your operating budget, you build that trust fund up enough to purchase a new bus?
No, actually, it's, no, it's actually for the vans and, uh, short buses.
No.
And it was in the budget in twenty-ten, eleven, and twelve-thirteen.
Can you give us some history on that, please, Mr. Jersey?
I just didn't want you to get to the point where you need to purchase a van and don't have any, enough money in that expendable trust fund.
You currently have forty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars in that trust fund.
So you don't have to put any, I mean, what's a, what's a small, short bus cost?
Forty-three. But I wouldn't recommend buying one of those.
Well, you just hadn't put any money in that trust fund for the last couple of years, I didn't know.
I mean, it's, no, it's worth, you know, maybe check with Tim to see if, what he thinks, whether that needs more money in it, or.
We'll look, if you look at the replacement schedules, see if that's on the replacement schedule any time soon.
Well, I think what we should be doing, probably get a couple more minivans, because you've got too many seventy-seven passengers.
They're much more economical, what we use it for.
With, with one kid on it, going to Boston.
We, we, we should probably talk to, talk to somebody, I'd agree with you, see, we could get a couple of minivans, it's so much more economical.
Yeah, even the four, the, oh, what are they, what are they, no, the twenty-eight passenger, the small one? What do you think, huh? Twenty-two, whatever, even those are too big for a lot of the things that we use.
So you're thinking a caravan?
Yeah, a minivan. Probably save a lot of, a lot of money.
I make a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one A three-two J. Second up, all in favor? Zero A.
Aye. Brown is.
Troy A.
B. A.
Are you going to be on?
Should be. Thank you all for coming.
I'll take a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for filling in, Ms. Mary.
See you next week.
I'm opposed, Mary.